I did, but I wasn't.
You said he can have, he can have mine.
Janice can do it?
It's not even a big deal.
It is, Janice, Janice, that's a big deal.
I'm not taking it home with me.
Janice, that's a big deal.
I'm not cherishing this.
Yeah, Janice.
All right, all right, we're ready?
Oh, no, no, that's all, I'll print it out myself next time.
Okay.
I'm gonna go with Janice.
We're ready to go. All right, good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
June 7th, board meeting of supervisors, call to order this time. If you don't mind, may I ask Mr. Slade?
Let's open our time together, Father. Thank you for, again, the day that you've given us this opportunity and privilege that we have to come together to conduct the work of the county, the business of the county. Father, I pray for these men as they seek to find your will governing the county effectively, efficiently, Father, representing all the interests of our county. Thank you for the many blessings that we enjoy as a county, Father, financially, law enforcement, Father, our first responders of all kinds, our emergency operations personnel, our administrative staff, the list goes on and on, Father, our elected officials across this county, how effective they are in their service. I pray, Father, that we won't take that for granted. We will thank you for the government that we have. Help us now as we participate together to make it that much more effective in Christ's name than ever.
Amen. Just one little note I forgot to mention, might want to check your phones, don't do like I do, leave mine on. So make sure they're internal solid. Okay, next we have, on the public comments recognition, we have our honorable Judge Bubba Brantley, District Attorney. He's come here to do a special recognition.
Y'all are used to recognizing our quality law enforcement around here. And Bubba is no stranger to what quality law enforcement looks like. So don't be surprised when the subject matter of Bubba's talk to y'all today drifts, as usual, right back to our sheriff.
Thank you. And I'm glad you did that, because if you want to arrest somebody for this, that's the guy. First of all, I want to thank this board, your wonderful attorney for making public safety your priority in this county. I want to thank you for recognizing that, providing people a safe place to live, and a safe place to work, and raise their families, educate their children, worship. If you have all those things, everything else falls into place. People move in, businesses move in, the education system flourishes, and we have all that in Rankin County. Due in large part to the fact that you make public safety your priority, and I want to thank you for that. I want to thank you for working hand in hand with the District Attorney's Office. We're always pulling the rope in the same direction. And thank you for providing us the resources to be the best District Attorney's Office we can be. Now, probably the most important aspect of that public safety is our law enforcement. And our chief law enforcement agency in the Rankin County is our Sheriff's Department. And what a great Sheriff's Department we have. It's one of the best in the nation. And that all starts at the top with the sheriff. And we've had an unprecedented year, a lot of challenges. And when I think of unprecedented, I think of no blueprint to follow. You got to have the right guy at the top to navigate those things. This pandemic, this negativity toward law enforcement, especially on a national basis, these national groups coming into our state with their money, trying to influence how our people are going to live, whether or not they're going to pay consequences for violating our laws, all of that's unprecedented. And we've got the right guy at the top, I promise you that. Couple months ago, I was asked to nominate someone for the top law enforcement officer in Rankin and Madison Counties. I think it's the top award a law enforcement officer can get, I think it's appropriately named, top cop. I got together with my assistant district attorneys, because they deal with these law enforcement agencies and these law enforcement officers daily, every day. And it was unanimous that we nominate our sheriff for this award. On May 15th of this past year, and let me say this, usually, along with this award, when it's presented, it's a big deal. It's held over at the Trademark, there's a lot of food, and pop, and circumstance, and speakers. And again, because of these unprecedented times, we didn't do that. This year, I had the honor of awarding this award in the lobby of our sheriff's office. I was talking with Mr. Slade about it, and he insisted, and I agreed, and I'm thankful to you for that, that I come before you today so that we can recognize our 2021 top cop, Sheriff Brian Bailey.
Y'all, it's the one most humbling thing, and again, I got a boat slow there the first time. This is twice he's gotten me, now Chris conspiring with him. But y'all, I'm standing on the shoulders of the men and women of Rankin County Sheriff's Office, the supervisors, the supporters, the staff here, if that's not me, it's a team effort, and that's what makes us look so good. But it's such an honor, one of the biggest honors of my life, and I thank you, appreciate y'all, thank you.
Thank you.
Y'all, I hate, we've got two jury trials, these are starting upstairs.
Like you said, it's, we understand, thank you. All right, next we have Brandon Cobb. You got a big act to follow there, big boy.
There's no way to do this to me. Anytime I come in here, y'all give me somebody to follow like that. All I say, Father, is I hope that somebody can one day talk to me, talk about me the way they talk about you. Good morning, nice to see y'all finally back in person, it's been quite a while. Mr. Brandon, I could meet you, you weren't here last time I was here. Just kind of give y'all an update on mosquito control for this year. Season started out pretty good, our mosquito levels have stayed low, mostly thanks to this rain. We got a lot of rain coming in, flushing out the puddles and the dishes, flushing out the eggs and mosquitoes, and then on top of our efforts of lower side spraying. We've started out low, things are looking good right now, we're not having any problems. We've got a couple calls from y'all, going to take care of a couple of issues, nothing big, no problems. So y'all have any questions for me?
Appreciate it, thank you.
All right, thank y'all gentlemen.
We don't get phone calls, and you don't have to, it must everything be going pretty good.
Yes, sir.
I could ask you later after the meeting, but you won't be here, and I'll be headed somewhere else. And I forget, they're having an account.
We've been taken care of it already.
It goes till 13th.
Yes, sir, we've already made arrangements, we took care, we went out there and sprayed beforehand, and been hitting a couple nights during, we're going to keep taking care of them, we talked to some of the people out there.
I would never, I mean, I wouldn't say that, I don't know how they spend, they all camp out, you know, it's outside. At night, they're already tougher than I am.
We do a lot of camping, personally, me and family members and friends, and from about April 20th till about November, we don't.
Yeah, I understand that.
Because, one, it's too hot, and two, the skeeters will get you. But yeah, we've been, we've been taken care of.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, y'all have a good day.
Thanks, Brandon, thank you. Let's see, a lot of big calls here, isn't he?
With the report of the work session, kind of covered what call needs to cover in this particular point.
All right, well, all right, old business, motion approved, old business.
I'm making a motion.
Motion by Brad, second by Steve, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, dissent agenda.
Motion approved.
Motion approved, dissent agenda by Brad, second by, who was it?
Second.
Jay, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed. Okay, Caroline Gilbert, tax collector. Good morning.
Okay, item A, under my section, request of approval for reversal of supplemental chargebacks on the following properties that are listed in your agenda.
Yep.
I'm not going to read through every single one of those.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion approved by Daniel, second by, I think Steve, Jay, one of you down there. All in favor, say aye. All opposed. You don't need to read all those pins off?
I mean, I will if you want me to. Item B, request to issue a refund on the 2020 tax statement in the amount of $962.25 for parcel F9E 31 to 10, due to the property being sold prior to the issuance of the homestead chargeback.
So moved.
Motion approved by Daniel.
Second.
Second by Jay, all opposed, all opposed. All right, thank you.
All right, now you want me to read all the pins?
You got, yeah, you got anything else? Hey, how's our, how's the stuff going on at the, whatever we were trying to do at the other office?
I think we're in a good spot, there's still a few things that I know they're trying to work on, just footage where you can view things and whatever, but I mean, it's working. So we're in a much better position, thank y'all.
All right, John Sullivan, so good to see you here today, our tax assessor.
I try to get here as much as I can. I'll make a petition to change the assessment of 2020 real property assessment.
So moved.
Motion approved by Jay, second by, I believe, Steve, all in favor, say aye. All opposed. Thanks, thanks, John. You don't have to hang around. Good to see you, man. Road manager.
Morning.
Morning.
Uh, road work accomplished for May, and road work scheduled for June.
So moved.
Second.
Motion approved by Jay, second by Daniel, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed.
And we're trying to get started on our summer work right now, guys, but weather's kind of kicking us right now with this rain, but.
Hey, Mike, I sent you one thing this morning over in Wexford Court in Castle Woods, there was a pretty big sinkhole popped in in front of a driveway.
Yes, sir.
Maybe you can do a work order for me on that.
I got a crew doing a lot of book of tents this morning.
Like it was dropping off pretty good right in front of that driveway?
Yes, sir.
I don't tell you now, I forget about it.
All right. B, I got a request, utility permit, AT&amp;T, structure fiber utility across Stowe Road in between Highway 25 and Stump Bridge Road.
Motion.
Motion approved by Steve, second by Brad, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed.
Miss Janice, if y'all will, I want to hold that permit, I want to get it approved, but I want to hold it on contingency. We get some, we got cables that are over there in a cupboard, I want to make sure we get it fixed before we approve. I won't hold it, but.
Hey, that's a, between flow wood and pearl, what gas plan is.
C, I got a request, authority to replace a bridge on Fox Hall Road.
So moved.
Motion approved by Jay, second by Daniel, any discussion? Is that, that one is on the bridge list that we got to replace, that's one of them.
So, do we need to hold this for our package that we're going to get together?
Yeah, Jay, part of, part of what we want to talk about on that is going to end up being in executive. So I don't want to say too much at this point because of the dicey nature of that calculation. But I would say that with respect to this particular one, if it's a situation where the bridge is of a, in a condition where it's important to move forward, I would not hold this one up, waiting on that package.
Well, is it?
Certainly.
We'll talk about it, we'll talk about it.
Okay.
Yeah, so I would say that we'd move forward appropriately to authorize it, but when we get started on it could be a subject to later discussion.
Okay, that'll work. All right, motion second, any more discussion? Not all in favor, say aye. All opposed. All right, Tim Parker.
Thank you, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. President, the first item we have is Lone Pine Plantation. We recommend an approval of the final plat and a letter of credit in the amount of $100,000, that's a District 4 property.
Motion.
Motion approved by Steve, second by Jay, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed.
The next item we have, Mr. President, is Greenfield Station Parkway Part 2. We recommend an approval of final plat, that's a District 3 development. That is the main road going into the Greenfield Station development. The developer has placed the final wearing surface on the Parkway, so he'll, this, so there's no letter of credit for it because he's completed the work, the subdivision is, lacks one phase, which is almost complete now, and this would just start his one-year warranty on the Parkway.
Motion approved.
Motion approved by Brad, second by Steve, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. I mean, y'all opposed?
Item C, Mr. President, is Osprey Cove. We recommend an approval of the preliminary plat, this is District 2 development. This is actually a PRV, in PRV's territory, but as you well know, the county maintains the roads in the area, so we're reviewing the, through the process, only on the roads, so that's what we've reviewed on the preliminary plat.
Yeah, and I just want to echo exactly what you just said, this is over there off Fane Land Circle in front of Arbor Landing subdivision area.
Adjacent to Arborland.
It's PRV property, all we're, our only involvement in this is the roadways.
Correct.
For this site, it's not the subdivision, it's reason subdivision's coming, or the houses that are coming, or how that's all done. The only play the county has in it is the roadway of it, so our evaluation of the preliminary plat is in dealing with the roadway and drainage.
As will be the construction drawings and then approving the final plat.
Correct, yep, so I'll make a motion to approve.
All right, motion approved by Daniel, second by Steve, any more discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed.
Item D, Mr. President, is Pisgah Place. We recommend an approval of the preliminary plat, this is a development off of Highway 43. It's, how many, how many lots is it, about 15 or so?
16.
16, 16 months.
And we talked about the square footage on that, did y'all get?
Yes, the development was in agreement with all requirements.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion approved by Daniel, second by Steve, any more discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed.
Thank you.
Mr. Slade? Can we combine these three?
Man, Daniel, that was a tough beat Friday night.
Two seconds here. Make sure you look at the right agenda.
I saw that, I saw it.
Yeah, so the first two, A and B, will be to set public hearings for June the 14th. That's for the Rogers and the Blau conditional use permits, so A and B can be taken together.
Okay.
I'll make a motion.
Motion approved, A and B, set the public hearings, second by Steve, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed.
Item C is to set a public hearing for July the 15th at 9:00 a.m. for the Cool Deep Seating Conditional Use Permit.
So moved.
Motion approved by Jay, second by Daniel, all in favor, say aye. All opposed. Okay.
Item D is a public hearing for the Rankin County initiated rezoning request at Highway 468, District 3 property. The county is seeking a zoning change from R1B to C2 for two parcels that are owned by Van Allen, and they are plus or minus 4.5 acres of a parcel owned by Ada Tony, this is at Highway 468. The area on the south side of 468 has developed as commercial, starting with Dean's Funeral Home, and then the Subway, the Dollar General, and Van's Deer Processing and Sporting Goods. The parcel on the southeast corner of Highway 468 and 469 has been rezoned to C2 as well. These three parcels are the only ones that front on the south side of 468 that are zoned residential currently, the three that I just listed. And so the zoning change to C2 would reflect the commercial nature of the development in this area. The zoning map would be consistent from Dean's Funeral Home all the way to the corner of 468 and 469. So that's the basis for the request, that public hearing is open. I'll ask if there is anyone here to speak in opposition to the county-initiated rezoning request at Highway 468. Is there anyone here to speak in opposition on that matter? Mr. President, I don't see anyone here to speak in opposition on that matter. This time we'll close that public hearing and be appropriate to take action.
I'll make the motion.
Motion approved by Brad, second by Steve, all in favor, say aye. All opposed.
Mr. President, item E was conditioned on whether or not the board took the action that it has taken now with respect to item D, and that is to conduct a public hearing on a conditional use request that has been made by Mr. Van Allen. He is seeking a conditional use to permit construction of a 9,000-square-foot building to be used as meat processing. He will be expanding his current operation onto the adjoining two parcels. Mr. Allen will also be adding additional asphalt parking to the west of the new building. He owns three parcels that total six acres. We have not received any drainage information presently, and so we would ask that if the board is of the mind to grant the conditional use that it does so contingently upon the presentation of an adequate drainage plan to Mr. Parker.
Yep.
So at this time, that public hearing is open, I'll ask if there is anyone here to speak in opposition to the Van Allen conditional use request. Anyone to speak in opposition on that matter? Mr. President, I don't see anyone here to speak in opposition on that matter, we'll close that public hearing. At this time, it'd be appropriate to take action.
I'll make that motion with the conditions.
Yes, sir.
Motion approved by Brad.
Second.
Second by.
Second.
Bishop.
Bishop, Mr. Bishop, all in favor, say aye. All opposed.
Mr. President, item F is a continuation of a public hearing on the James and Marcia Beasley dimensional variance request at 151 Woodlands Glen Circles, District 2 property. So that public hearing is restarted. James and Marcia Beasley at 151 Woodland Glen Circle are seeking a dimensional variance for an accessory structure, the property's in Castlewood subdivision, which is a part of the Reservoir Community District. Our zoning overlay for the RCD applies. They are requesting a variance of four feet from the required five-foot rear yard setback, and a five-foot variance from the 12-foot maximum height requirement for accessory structures. The Beesleys replaced an existing deck and seating area with a wooden cover built on the same footprint that had been there for a number of years. So that public hearing is open. I'll ask at this time if anyone is here to speak in opposition to the James and Marcia Beasley dimensional variance request, if you can come forward at this time and state your name and address for the record.
Come forth, please, whichever one wants to come first.
The opposing.
If you would, kind of keep it, let me just say, whatever he's saying, if y'all have the same thing to say, just, you know, just for time, just don't come forth, and kind of keep it limited if you don't mind.
My name is Johnny Martis, I'm Vice President of Castlewood Homeowners Association. I also consider myself a friend of Ray and Marcia Beasley, and this is a tough time for us in this process. But what we're here for is asking the Board of Supervisors to support the HOA, support all HOAs in the county, because there's been a process that has been not followed, and that's what worries us. If the process is not followed, everybody, the other 1,387 homes that are in Castlewood are going to be able to do the same thing. There was not an ARC applied for, had there been, we wouldn't be standing here right now, because we could have worked with the Beesleys and pointed out things that were going wrong, that what they were doing, and we could have prevented a lot of this. So what we're asking for is that the process be protected. There was not a building permit, I mean, that's your, that's your deal. There was a roof put on this, there was an existing deck, it was closer to the property, we agree with that, that, we don't argue that, but it was replaced, but there was a lot more. There was a roof put on, there was electricity in there, there was a wall put up. So there was considerable differences from the existing deck that was there, and that's what concerns us.
Excuse me, why didn't that get handled back when the previous owner owned the property?
The previous owner owned that property had put in an ARC a number of years ago.
Within the variance?
Within, at that, with that footprint that is there right there, and he had three walls, windows, a roof, and all of that, and that was disapproved, and we disapproved that. And then he came back without asking for another ARC and put that deck with the seating around there, and it got past us, we didn't know it, and we didn't know that it was there, and so that's what happened on that one. But that did not have a roof on it.
But it was still within the variance. What's there now hadn't been moved any closer from the previous.
To the property lines? Not that we can tell, no, sir, no. It was, it was built pretty much on the same footprint of the existing, and it's just higher, it's got a wall in it, and it got electricity.
Just added to it, just added to it.
Right.
Some ways, yeah.
Right, yes. And so, you know, that's the thing that concerns us, that we're asking the board to support the HOA so that we won't have this to happen again. If the right process, the building permit, I mean, the building permit, I think, would have helped prevent some of this also had they had a building permit on this, but it's, it's, I could go through this whole list of things that Keely pretty much covered with you guys, I think, last meeting.
Right.
When we first brought this up.
Yeah, she did a really good job.
And explained all of the variances and everything. We're just here to support that, and to ask that you support the HOA, all the HOAs in Rankin County, because it's important to keep our neighborhoods what we want.
Renee, he keeps referring to the building permit. Refresh him again, what was said the other day when she was here about the building permit? Did he come, did they come to us, and we, what, where'd the building permit get?
There is no building permit at the present time, we don't have one, they have, they have for one, they have come, you know, after we remain aware, and are going through the variance process first.
So they, they came after the fact? Okay.
The whole thing, I believe, was done after the fact. For example, they didn't go to the architectural review to get approved, they didn't file a building permit with the county, those two things, it did not happen. One of the things that's going to have to happen as this goes on, if there's a variance, is they'll have to come and pay a fine for not filing the proper building permit, and go through that process on the same point. There's been a lot of misrepresentation on social media that obviously gets out of control when that stuff gets out there. And as a member of that HOA association, I'm disappointed on how that was handled, social media-wise, that we shouldn't have got into the Beesleys the way it happened on, on social media. Because at the end of the day, once everybody burns all the powder they want, it's suing everybody, and they've had to get lawyers, and y'all's lawyers are now involved, and the county's involved, they're still going to be our neighbors, and they're still going to be our residents inside of that area. And that's the sad travesty and the whole thing, that they couldn't come together, the two groups, the HOA and the Beesleys, and work out a good compromise on what needs to happen. The county's involved in it, and the county's going to act. There's even been a representation that the county's already acted on this, the county hasn't, which was a total false misrepresentation on that. That's why we set a public hearing, and that's why we try to get the facts to be sure both parties are, their views are expressed. I'm in a difficult position because I pay dues at the Homeowners Association, just like you, in the same exact neighborhood. And I understand the issues that the HOA has, and I understand the issues that the county has on the same point. The issue of variances that come up to mind, in my mind, this is a textbook example of, as things happen, that for one reason or another, that the Beesleys were, bought a house that was already an existing footprint in place, they took on some problems that were already there prior to them buying the house. They didn't put the footprint down of the base patio and stuff like that, they bought that in that same point. And they should have researched and figured out what the process is to go about to construct something to it, they didn't. That's their mistake on that side, and I agree with you on that 100%. But from the same side of that, the county's perspective would be issuing a building permit, not necessarily going through architectural review, so those two really don't work hand in hand. The Architectural Review Committee, the HOA, is different than what the county is, right? So there's two separate animals of that. But there should have been more communication between both parts, the Beesley should have came to the HOA. And the HOA, in my opinion, should have gone back and said, okay, let's figure out a way to figure out what we need to do from here. Because that communication broke down, we're here now. And it's kind of like one of those issues that there's always three sides to everything, right? There's the Beesley side, the HOA side, and somewhere in the middle is kind of where it all lays down. There's a tremendous amount of discrepancies where the lot lines fall. The plat shows one setting of description of the lot, and then the title says something totally different. There was additional land that was added to the Beesley's property that wasn't inside the plat of subdivision side. So the question falls up on that, does that fall inside the HOA's scope at that point? It definitely falls into the county side of things. So there's a ton of confusion out there, and the. So there's a ton of confusion out there, and the most unfortunate thing is that we put all this stuff in social media, and then we aired out and tried the Beesleys on social media, and that was horrible, and it shouldn't have been done that way. What we should have done is come together and figure out a good solution to fix it. The textbook reason we do variances in the county is to provide issues just exactly like this. Somebody acquired some property that there was a bad representation or a bad placement of a structure or something, and the county examines each one of those independently. It's no different than, say, a law enforcement officer is going through, sitting at a stop sign, and a lady runs through it, right? So the lady runs through the stop sign, and the officer says, well, I just witnessed this misdemeanor activity. So I pull the person over. And I, by the statute, I can do several different things. I could arrest the woman, take her to jail, tow her vehicle, have them bail out, and proceed from there. Or the officer could say, tell you what I'll do, I'll take this circumstance into consideration, and I'll make the decision just to offer this person a warning, or issue them a ticket, or just write them a citation, and not go through the transport side of it. There has to be opinions and reasonable decision-making on issues that come up. For example, the law enforcement description I gave to you. Same issue to me as I see variances that come up. We have to take all the information in the hand and figure out, really not, why it happened, how it happened, and what got us to this position. So what I've got, Mr. Slay, what I want to do is I've got a statement from the Beesleys, I've got an email from Keely explaining everything. I'd like to issue both of these into our record, which is our public record, so it's in there. I'm not going to read all those things, everybody knows all the stuff.
I've got it.
So I'm going to put those in here. I'll give you copies of them if y'all don't have them or whatever.
Okay.
And because what's going to happen is now the Beesleys have lawyers, the association I'm a part of now has lawyers, and it's turned into a bloody mess. And it shouldn't be like that, to where good common citizens, the community of Castlewood is one of the most highly regarded subdivisions in the reservoir. I live in there, right? And the members of our association serve for no money, and they got a very, very hard job, and I applaud every single one of our board members that represent us. But we've got to have some common sense in this stuff, if we sit down and keep everybody spending a whole bunch of money slaughtering each other. That's not how Rankin County citizens should live and function.
Totally.
So that's the situation we're in right now. It paints everybody into a rough picture. There is issues that the county goes, the county has to make a decision on a variance on a couple of feet from a property line that we don't really know where it exists or not, whether it's inside or outside of it, still hasn't been surveyed, it's done. There's a lot of facts that we don't know from the county's perspective. In regards to the building permit, if this moves through, they'll come in and pay the building permit. Matter of fact, they'll pay double the building permit fees for going outside of that scope, if that goes that direction. But it still goes back to the end of the HOA's responsibility for the architectural review side of it, and that's an issue directly dealt with the Beesleys, not the county. Because the county doesn't get involved in architectural review matters for HOAs. This board has been very supportive. We've got over 200 HOAs that this board tries to support and back. That's why the reservoir overlay district was created. But you've got to have interpretation of how things happen. There was no malice intention, I believe, in them putting up the structure just in spite of everybody else. I don't believe they would have spent tens of thousands of dollars to create an outdoor kitchen area next to their pool in the backyard if they felt like they were going to get into a lawsuit or just to spite the HOA. I feel like it's bad communication on both parts, the Beesleys and the HOA. They say that they had the HOA come out and look at it, and the HOA wouldn't work with them. I find that hard to believe. The HOA says that the Beesley wouldn't work with them. I find that hard to believe, right? So somewhere in the middle of this, we have to be respectful of each group, and we've got to figure out the best solution to it. And that's what we're going to try to do here in the next few minutes. So I appreciate your service. Mr. Morris, you've been a true asset to the homeowners association. We've met numerous times on different issues and tried to find a way. The county wants to be partnerships with anybody, not necessarily an HOA, but any resident in Rankin County. And that's what we're here to do. But we have to do things legally inside our scope. That's what this guy keeps a shock collar on me a lot of times to do, to be sure that I operate inside the law, because I'm not going to break the law, all right? So this guy's got to keep me in check, along with the other board members on the same point. So I appreciate your comments, I appreciate your passion and your love for Castlewood. I've got the same love. I live 500 yards from where these people live, I play golf in the same golf course they do, and pay dues in the same association you represent me for.
That's the year of my backyard.
That's right. So I appreciate you.
And the thing is that, you know, we would have supported the building permit. The ARC was the first step.
Yeah.
And we would have definitely told that you need a building permit. So we support.
What I employ you, not as a county supervisor, but as a paying member of our association, is we got to work something out with the Beesleys, for one side or the other. And I say that to the point, because when everybody's firing all the shots they're going to fire, these are our neighbors, right? These are the people down the street. The Beesleys have been a strong person in our community since I was this tall. I'm not going to say ages, because my hair's turning white, right? But since I was this tall. And they are, they're good people. The people in the homeowners association are good people that's volunteered to work on the service. So we've got to find a way to talk about it instead of suing everybody.
Okay.
So that's my, I'm going to enter both of these things, Mr. Slay into the record on the same point, but thank you, Mr. Morris, for your comments. That's probably more than I needed to say, Slay.
Yeah, you took more than three minutes.
Sorry about that.
Keep him in line.
Should have turned my mic.
But with all that being said, still, it falls back on HOA.
Yes, sir. Let me...
Have they filed suit? Isn't that how they normally deal with these things?
I think there's not been a formal filing of a lawsuit. I think there's been suggestions that it's coming. I know we have others who want to speak, but I want to make sure that we kind of focus on what is before this board. I mentioned this in the prior hearing that has been continued to today, but I want to refocus our attention just a bit. And you guys understand this, so this is really for the benefit of all of us in the room and not just you guys. The Board of Supervisors does not enforce restrictive covenants. We do not enforce those. What we try to do, when we know about activity, that's important, when we know about activity ahead of time that could potentially violate a set of restrictive covenants that we are aware of, we will communicate with that person. You need to think about these restrictive covenants before we go any further. But the key here is we have to know about the activity beforehand, and we need to know that there's a set of restrictive covenants that are in force and effect. If we know those things, our folks are basically geared up to say, timeout before we go any farther, double-check to make sure that you're clear with your restrictive covenants. Here's why. Restrictive covenants are private agreements about land use among property owners in a defined area. That's what they are. They're not ordinances, they're not generally applicable, they are specific to pieces of property and the owners of those pieces of property, and they are, to the extent that they are enforced, all right? That's a key consideration. They can be much more restrictive about land use than ordinances are. In fact, I would dare say, you wouldn't need restrictive covenants if they're less restrictive than the county's general ordinances that are applied. And most subdivision developments in Rankin County are not satisfied to just rely on the county's land use regulations, because they're generally not that restrictive, and they don't pick up all behavior that may be difficult and challenging among neighbors, especially neighbors who live real close to each other, right?
Yeah.
So that's why we're not in the restrictive covenant business. We can't craft regulations that fit every little situation that we would find around the county. And what works for, say, a Buckingham that has large lots and good separation among landowners probably is not going to work in Willa Grant, because the houses are so much closer together, and you find issues of land use that gets impacted that way. So we're not in the restrictive covenant business. We allow the homeowners associations or the individual property owners to address potential violations of restrictive covenants, all right? So if the discussion today turns toward your being an enforcement mechanism for restrictive covenants, that would not be an appropriate request to make of this body, all right? So what's before you is this. We have a situation where we did not know that activity was going to go on, that appears to violate the restrictive, I'm sorry, the Reservoir Community District overlay regulations at a small point, actually, two small points. One is that this structure appears to be too close to the property line. We have a minimum setback in the RCD for accessory structures that's five feet, you've got to be at least five feet off the property line. There's also a height restriction, and there's no real guidance in the RCDs, no fault of ours, it's just not a guidance in there that says if a structure is going to be taller than a particular height, you need to ask for a variance from that height restriction. In this case, you've got a sloping lot and a structure that sits at one point at a level, and then at the end point at a different level, and depending on where you start your measuring, there could be a height issue there. As it relates, in this case, I think this is very important for you guys to understand, after further review, this is after the application for the variance was filed with us, after further review, we went out to look to see if we could figure out where, in fact, is this lot line? Where is the property line? And what's clear to me as legal counsel is that we don't have information before us, we haven't had it yet, and we don't have it today, that clearly demonstrates where the property line for this lot actually is. We've received additional information that this lot may have been expanded after it was platted. In other words, whoever owned it originally apparently acquired some additional property from either the HOA or from the original developer, it's unclear, we just don't know, that expanded the lot boundaries. And today, you can't, or we can't, couldn't, in our, I would call it an informal setting, we didn't have a way to figure out where the corners of the lot are, we didn't have a way to find pins, and we don't have the information in front of us. So as we sit here today, you're being asked to grant a variance that either is or is not even required. In other words, if it turns out that the lot line is more than five feet away from the corner of this structure, you don't need to grant a variance. No variance is required. Does that make sense?
Yes.
It may still be a HOA problem, there may still be a restrictive covenant problem, because I think the covenants of the subdivision require a greater distance than our RCD regs are, but that's not before you.
And one other thing to that, the actual permit for the structure itself is an issue. Do they have to come back in, take care of the permit side, they pay the fees?
Yeah.
Get that processed the same way?
Absolutely. And we have mechanisms, by the way, to deal with that.
100% right.
We double our permit fee, that's our, that's what you guys have decided that is going to be, the repercussions if you move forward with a construction project that requires a building permit without getting a permit. We double the fee, all right? And so, that's the only mechanism that we have, by the way. So I guess you've got three issues before you. The building permit issue, which is simple enough to address, the lot line issue, which I think I've given you the information about, and then the height restriction issue, which is unclear, okay? So a possible outcome here could be, for the purpose of this application, the board is, would take the position, we do not know whether or not there is a violation, there is not enough information before us to determine that. You could also decide, should you choose to do so, to grant a variance in the event that there is a restriction, or you could deny it. Those are your three options, okay? So with that, having said that, and everybody understanding that's kind of where we are and what this board is entertaining here today, we would reopen the floor for further discussion at the board's discretion. Next person that wants to speak. We just need to come forward, name and address.
Anybody got anything to add to that?
Yes, they do.
Somebody got something to add to it, come forward.
Mayday.
Good morning.
Hi, Cankie Lailock, Castlewood Homeowners Association, 200 technical overlook.
Just a minute.
So...
Hang on just a second.
Turn a little short, I'm loud, so...
Now, did y'all get that, y'all get the address?
Cankie Lailock, 200 technical overlook.
Okay, thank you.
I'm the HOA Board Secretary, also in charge of the covenants team. To address your question about the prior structure, we did our due diligence on everything about this once this was brought to our attention. The prior owner, just before the Beesleys, built the structure versus the pool that was built by the person before that. He built it without architectural approval, there were no setbacks, there was no permit. We managed to track all of that down. It was a shorter structure that no one saw because of that slope. So what we are doing to fix that is we're now going to have to have inspections by golf cart, because we can't get to the back of homes if you can't see someone doing something illegally from, without architectural approval from the front. So we're now going to have to do extra volunteer work.
You better get a long sheet of paper.
We're the largest in Rankin County at this point, so yes, it's a lot of work, and as a retired National Guard Colonel, I can appreciate that. I've been on an HOA board, often owned, for about 30 years at pretty much every home, because I believe in that volunteer job, because we're kind of like your National Guard as far as your eyes and ears, because you guys require covenants, you put the covenants in place, those covenants have all these laws and rules. So your HOA volunteer board, that's our, that's, we're basically your volunteer National Guardsmen doing that work that supports you guys, and we just ask that you guys support us. Now, we can work through different things, had they submitted an architectural request in advance, like they knew to do but didn't. I already know that they had to take a structure down in another subdivision. So we could have had them put it here where it would have been approved versus here where it was not going to be approved. There's simple things, and we could still do that. It's a lot of expensive lumber right now, as you guys know. But our issue is the location, and that's, you know, and the precedence it sets, because we've got a lot of people now looking at it saying, you denied ours, why are they getting this kind of treatment where everybody's shut up on their property and is wanting to do something different? So we just ask that you support us as we support you, because we work really hard hand in hand with you guys, trying to keep the subdivision as intended by the covenants that you approved, so that we can all keep our values up, which keeps the taxes up, which pays for all these other things. And so we just ask for your support.
I have a question. The structure, the footprint had already been expanded before they bought it from our stand, and it's been there for 10 or 12 years, something like that? A lot, several years?
It's been there, it's been there a few years. They bought in 2019. The person that owned it a few years right prior to them, not the original owner, built a, was denied that large structure, Mr. Martis talked about.
Right, yeah.
And apparently went in and built a low deck. Short.
And y'all didn't know it was a deck built?
No, from the streets, you can't see it at all, because it was, because of the downhill slope, it was down here. So what I do know, when we're looking back at all the ARC approvals, is they've got an enclosed patio, an open patio, a percla. The pool got built by the original owner. That variance was already approved within our 30-foot setback from the golf course lot line. The other structure that they wanted to build in the way of a pool house was denied, but he apparently went in and built that low deck down there anyway. So we didn't know that until we started getting the calls about this new structure, and that's when we went through all the research on this.
But you knew the original footprint was there, right?
We don't know the exact original footprint.
Did you know there was an original footprint of the deck that was already there?
Just from the photos, we can, we can't see...
I'm talking about when it was denied previously. Did you know they were going to put a deck down?
She said when you...
I'm not sure what you're asking.
I guess what I'm asking is, when they were going to construct their, I guess, a couple owners before, when they were going to instruct a, construct a gazebo right there, did y'all know that there was an existing deck, or that they put a deck anyway down? Did the HOA board know that there was an existing deck there?
The prior owner...
Before they put the gazebo up?
Two owners back built a pool and a large retaining wall, and the retaining wall was in five or six feet from the back fence lot line.
And the HOA knew that, right?
The pool, yes, that was two owners ago.
Okay.
The other massive structure was denied, so we were not, there was no lower deck at that point.
She said it built after they denied.
So I guess, I guess my question is, is your concern the gazebo or the original footprint that's there, the base, the deck, that was there closer to the lot line? Which one is the concern?
The board is actually in mid-discussion on that, as to whether we would be willing to approve the low deck only versus nothing at all, because it is a precedent issue. to approve the low deck only versus nothing at all because it is a precedent issue.
But what you're asking the county to do is remove the deck because it's too close to the lot line.
We're asking the county to support the board because we, we could have been your first line of defense.
Now, I guess my question is, are you asking, what the, that's what Slay was pointing the picture of. The action in front of the board is, one, the architectural review or the permit of the gazebo, right? That's, that's one issue. But the main issue the board, excuse me, is going to act on the day, is the issue of the, the footprint closer to the five-foot line. So is the HOA asking us to have them remove the footprint? We can't touch the gazebo side of it because they're going to pay the permit side of it, right? Are you asking the board to move the footprint away from the five-foot line?
Well, two things. I'd like for the board to delay that approval for two reasons. Number one, we'd like for the board, the HOA, to finish our review and decisions. And number two, you guys brought up something new about the lot line might not be the lot line, and when I stand out there with a parcel software, your fence was on the lot line. So that's news to us, and that throws a different wrench for us to go back and research. But for us to be hand in hand on the same page, because ideally, in a, in a, going forward, architectural comes to the board, if the HOA thinks it's something that should be approved in a variance, we should come hand in hand with the homeowners and say, hey, we're willing to approve our variance of the covenants, we'd like for the board to do the same.
But I, I guess, Sandy, what I'm asking is, come into this deal, you knew that the footprint could be outside the five-foot line, lot line, right?
This was all new to us.
You had no idea that the deck was within five foot?
We had no idea that deck was back there, and from the photos, we were saying, we don't know what the footprint was.
Coming into this today, you realize that's the action the board has to take, is on the footprint of it, right? So, we have to take an action on the footprint being within five foot of the boundary line. So I just want to be sure to understand what you're asking. You're telling me the HOA wants us to have them remove the footprint that could be or could not be within that five-foot barrier line?
The prior owner didn't have that approval either, so, so yes, we're asking for...
So the HOA is asking us to take the footprint down, the deck, everything else because it's too close to that line? Is that what they're asking?
They took the whole thing down. Like I said, where knew about, tell me more about the lot line.
I, I don't know. I don't know. We had random surveys out of it.
Which is why it's a little hard to make a decision.
My, my, my question is to you, is the HOA asking the board not to approve the variance because if we do not approve the variance, all of it gets torn down? Is that what the HOA wants us to do?
The HOA's...
I don't think till they decide, till they decide.
That's our problem.
But I, I guess that's my point.
We're trying to discuss this with the rest of the board, and we met out there a few days ago.
So I guess my question is, why are you here in opposing it? If you, if you're, if you're asking us right now to deny variance, request that was made, that they have to tear the whole thing out, that's the, the patio and everything else, I just want to hear you tell me, is that what the HOA is asking this board to do?
For consistency, yes.
To tear it all out?
And if the board is willing to, to work something out that says, keep the lower deck and not the other, we're perfectly willing to come back and have that discussion with the board.
What I'm trying to tell you is, you're trying to make a deal with the board that has nothing to do with the board.
We're asking the board to enforce your own rules.
No, no, listen to me. The, what I'm telling you is, the only thing the board can act on in regards to the building itself is the footprint. So are you, is the HOA asking, because that's the violation. The violation is the footprint. So are you asking us to tear out, have them tear out the entire footprint of everything that's set up? Is that what the HOA is, you are? You want it all torn out? Speak for the HOA, tell me what you want.
I can't vote for the whole HOA because we haven't finished voting on it. We've been pulling all of this data trying to do that, so I'm, I can represent my vote, but the entire board hasn't voted yet.
But what she's saying...
So, so why are you asking us to deny the variance if the board hasn't spoken? The height's an issue?
There's a height issue on it, and so we've been discussing whether to consider...
So, so I guess my thing is, you would say, I want the county to leave the footprint place and then tear down the gazebo? We're cherry picking what the regulations say? I guess my point is that, I, I'm with you on the height issue, right? Depending on where it's measured from or something like that.
There's a multitude of different var, violations here, yes.
So, but my point is, the main core one is the placement of the footprint, right? So if the variance is not given for the footprint, and you have to tear the footprint out, the rest of it's a moot point, right? Because the rest of it goes when the, when the footprint goes.
Yep.
So what I'm asking you is...
And then if they want to salvage that wood, we're willing to work with them on putting it in a, in a place that would have been approved.
I get it, but you want the footprint gone?
We want the footprint consistently with other rules, yes. Because the other homeowners are wanting the same thing, they're like, if you're going to approve this for, for them, then approve it for us.
That they all want to put building structures close to the lot line?
There are other people that have requested things, they've got shallow lots, so this opens the arms for us.
I, I just want to be sure I understand, the HOA is telling me that you want the footprint ripped out. That's what I want to hear you say, yes or no?
As a homeowner, I can say that. I'm on the board.
As the association, I'm a homeowner.
We haven't voted yet.
Okay. So I'm confused, so, all right.
All right, well, we, we beat that up enough, we, that sounds, it sounds to me like we're not in a place that we need to make any decisions.
Is, is there anybody else?
Yeah, is him, is somebody else, is someone else? I believe it was somebody in the, weren't you wanting to speak? You're fine, okay. Okay.
We still have somebody else. Beasley?
Where?
This is the applicant, Mr., Mr. Beasley.
There's somebody else.
This is Mr. Beasley.
Come on, I didn't see you, I didn't see you back on that side.
He, he won't be speaking in opposition. This is, this is Mr. Beasley.
Thank you for your time, this is a difficult time. Just to be sure, we used the same footprint, the HOA, they're not sure, we're sure, we can get the builder here to let you know he used the same footprint. We did build it up, we didn't get permission, we had from a good source, we didn't need it on a reconstruction, our mistake, we apologize. And on the height issue, we had the board over, finally, they came over. We wanted to show them that it's not blocking anyone's sight of the golf course. So, we've asked for a variance on the height. We know they grant variances, or either there are other properties that have not been approved either that we're going to be able to point out to them. So mainly what we need for y'all to do, we know we've got to deal with the HOA, is to grant that five-foot variance that has been there for ten years or so, and the height is a different issue, we've got to deal with them too. But I'm sorry we're taking up so much of your time, but I just thought y'all here, that footprint has been there for years.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Beasley.
I want to point one other thing out that occurs to me that needs to be addressed by this board, and it's this. The information that you've heard, although it's not one hundred percent clear, tends to indicate that this structure in some form has been present on this property for a number of years. You're hearing ten years or possibly more. If, if that's accurate, that is this low seating area and deck. Yes, sir. That, if that has been in place prior to August?
October of thirteen.
October of two thousand and thirteen, then that structure predates the RCD. That structure was in place before this board adopted the Reservoir Community District. That makes that a grandfathered use for purposes of the RCD, okay? So, the structure itself and its footprint, there are two challenges that I see to your doing anything directly related to this request today. We don't for sure know where the lot line is so that we can say, if it's covered by the RCD, that it's within the five-foot restriction. We don't know that. Number two, if it's in fact grandfathered, you don't need a request for the five-foot setback because there is no five-foot setback requirement if it predates the RCD. Notice that I have said nothing about the application of the restrictive covenants enforced by the HOA. Everybody get that? What this board does today will have no impact on the ability of the HOA to enforce its regulations. No impact. You will not hurt nor help either party as it relates to the restrictive covenants by acting on the request before you today. Now, they may have a different opinion about what the optics are, or whether politically it's expedient, but that's, that's not before you, that's not a legal issue before you. You have the right to make determinations about your ordinances, you can interpret them, and you can apply them. That's what the state legislature has authorized you to do. And so the suggestion that I made to begin with, unless there's somebody else to speak, not seeing anyone else to speak, I would propose that we close the public hearing, and then if, with your indulgence, I can walk through some options that you may have to address what's before you.
Okay.
Can we close the public hearing?
Yeah.
All right, it's closed. Option one would be to take no action, to simply say, we don't have enough information, we can't address the application before us, and therefore we choose to take no action on the application. That's option one. Option two could be to grant the variance as requested, to allow for, and this is the way it should be structured, and I will help document this for purposes of the minutes. If there is a setback violation, if there is a height restriction violation, if there is no grandfathered status for either of those, then in those, in that event, this board chooses to grant the variance. Your third option would be, taking all activities, all circumstances and all facts before you, you could deny the request for the variance. Those are the three options that I see that you have.
Well, until the lot line is determined, how can we make any decision at all? So why wouldn't we just bail no, have a no decision?
Or just be grandfathered?
Yeah. At this point, why don't we just have a no decision?
Yeah, so the, again, the board can say, we are choosing to take no action.
But until we know, why do we do anything?
Would Jared, would you, would you vote to have somebody tear down something that's already been there when they bought it?
I'm not the HOA.
I'm just saying, though, I mean, that's kind of what we're being asked to do.
I'm not the HOA, that's their duty.
Yeah, well, so you're saying, though, whatever we vote, we vote to allow the variance that was already there when these people bought it, that's not going to impact their, if the HOA wants to do like normal HOAs do and carry someone to court?
Yes, sir.
If they violate their...
They absolutely have that right, and this board's granting of a variance will have no impact on the ability of the HOA to enforce their restrictive covenants.
Let me ask this question, Craig. We deal with variances all the time, a lot of times. Most of the time it's not coming to us from a HOA, it's something that they find or who, whatever.
Right.
And they come before us, and they give us the facts, and they do an application, and if it's not something that is just really poison, we deal with those people and most of the time we approve them.
Yes, sir. My experience, Steve, I've been at this now for thirteen years with y'all's blessing. I, I cannot recall a situation where you were forced, forced to make a decision in a public meeting on a variance request like a setback type. I cannot remember an occasion. Why? Because typically we handle that internally, and we report to you guys, the property owner, the applicant, makes reasonable accommodations for any concerns that we have, and so it's simply a matter of the board voluntarily extending some grace to allow for the variance.
I feel, I mean, I understand both sides. However, as one of them said, we'd be sitting in a presence that you can just do whatever. I don't think so, not when they have to pay the fees and with, however, if you go out there and slaughter this guy's yard over something this small, I guarantee you there's four hundred other houses that are not in compliance, and everybody is going to be keeping their shape down, don't enter the door. And some of them are even going to be on the homeowners association. So we got to be careful whichever way we go.
Yeah.
And I mean, it's, I, I really think, from my perspective, we are being abused, this is not our, I mean, I say not our problem, our, our Rankin County, but the covenants and the board are established to handle their own things civilly. And they can, they have all the tools to do it, and I just think it looks like that we're a bigger hammer if we can, and I, I don't want to be put in that spot. I, I do understand keeping everything governed and tightened up, but they can still do that through their own association.
That's correct, yes, sir. That's correct. They have that ability. So my option B, which is, we don't know whether or not the variance is required, therefore we grant it simply as an acknowledgement that if it is required, we have solved an issue for that homeowner and any subsequent homeowner who may take possession of that property, and we don't have to revisit this issue constantly. Every time that property changes hands, unless this board acts on that question, there will be uncertainty about that lot. Now, you talk about devaluing property. Leave something like a potential ordinance violation unaddressed, and then see how far you get trying to sell that piece of property, or what impact it might have on the value of that property. If somebody knows, they may be filing a lawsuit, I guarantee you they'll build that into their offer. So the board has the ability to act, and it can do so acknowledging publicly, we don't even know if this is required, but because it is such a type of issue, it's an accessory structure, this is not the main dwelling, it's an accessory structure to the piece of property. Because we're recognizing that, and this would be a de minimis violation, even if it is a violation, of the ordinances, we will grant the, the, the application for the variance on both height and setback, but we're acknowledging that we don't know for sure that it's even required. That would be the option B piece. You can always say, we're not going to take action, we're going to do it, we're going to go ahead and grant it with the understanding that we don't know if we need to or not, or we're going to deny it. Those are your three options that are before you.
None of them are great at this point.
No. No matter what we do, still going to deal with HOA.
Yeah.
Yeah.
No matter what this board does, to the extent the HOA wants to take action, it has the freedom to do so under its regulations.
I'm, I'm like Steve, we're not building extra strength on one side or the other.
Not at all.
Well, I can tell you, I'm, I'm not in favor of making somebody tear down something that was already there whenever they purchased it, you know? But I definitely want to support the HOA because, you know, that's the backbone of what keeps us going.
It was the deck, though, the deck, not the structure.
I know, but we're being asked to, to rule on that right now.
Next is the deck.
That could be grandfathered, ain't it?
Keep in mind...
So what we're doing, though, is not going to have them tear anything down, what we're doing.
Unless the HOA and...
If we deny it.
The HOA can still come back and have them tear down the gazebo and the, and all that stuff.
We're not, we're not doing anything to insinuate that we want it tore down.
I think all that we can do is answer the question, do we want to approve his very, his request for a variance?
Of the RCD, the potential that there is an RCD issue, not a restrictive covenant issue.
Yeah.
An RCD issue.
Well, until we, until we know some things, can we really even do that? I don't understand how we can.
I believe that you can. I believe that you can say on the record, we don't know whether a variance is request, a variance is required, but if it is required, we will grant it. This board has the authority to do that.
Okay. About a motion or anything?
Um, I'm going to make a motion. Everything's in order with Renee, a request for a variance. We approve it with conditions, some of what you just said, you know, it's going to have some of the things that have to all be the same, and we...
Contingent on the lot line and the, and the grandfathering part.
How that all comes to play.
Yeah.
I mean, but still, they've got to go through their HOA. I mean, I say they've got to, that's something for the HOA to work out with them, and that's my motion.
Okay. I'll say it.
All right, I have a motion, I think you got, understood it by Mr. Gaines, seconded by Brad. Need discussion. All papers, aye? All opposed?
Nay.
All right, let's retroreflect, that was, that one nay.
This should have been a discussion after we, Jared, I just don't, I think we're going to be at the same conclusion, and we could come up here every two weeks and have different people talk, and draw this out for a year, and we'd still have the same conclusion.
Well, like I said, all boils down, all boils down simply really to the HOA.
Yeah.
And I think we made it clear that we don't get involved in their decision-making, we, we can't, we don't, and we don't, when you come up with HOA, that's what you all have, we just have it, it's not something that we approve and, or we enforce at all on any HOA.
We're trying not to intentionally step on... We try not to intentionally step on them. When we know ahead of time, we try not to intentionally step on them. We do our best. Mr. President, I want to make sure that the record's clear. We closed that public hearing. Board has taken action. Anyone here who was on the easily matter is free to stay or go. The next item under the public hearing is the it's a public hearing on the Bill Mosby rezoning request, Highway 43 South. This is a District 3 parcel. Mr. Mosby is seeking to rezone 25.76 acres on Highway 43 South from A2 to RE1. Mr. Mosby is proposing a residential, single-family development. This will have seven lots. All of the lots will front on the public road and they will meet or exceed the 100-foot minimum lot width required by the RE1 zoning context. None of the lots will be smaller than three acres. The developer's proposing a 2,000-square-foot minimum heating and cooled living space. One call was received in opposition to this request. At this time, we'll open that public hearing. I will ask if there is anyone here to speak in opposition to the Bill Mosby rezoning request. Anyone to speak in opposition on that matter? Mr. President, I don't see anyone here to speak in opposition on that matter. At this time, we'll close that hearing. It will also be appropriate to take action.
I'm making motion approved.
Second.
Motion approved by Brad, seconded by Jay. Any discussion? All favors aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Well, that one went quick.
I just have one that goes quick, right? Item H under my section is an acknowledgement of receipt of a written request from Artisan Power Technologies. This is our annual fireworks display in and around the July 4th period at the reservoir. Same company, same general area, same application, same documentation. I'd ask for approval of that request for the demonstration.
Most approved.
Second.
Most approved by Jay, seconded by Steve. All favors aye?
Aye.
All opposed?
We recently received a request from a constituent for permission to establish a private family cemetery. Wanted to get you guys up to speed on the process for that. Under Title 41-43-1, Subparagraph 2, this board has authority to authorize the establishment of a private family cemetery on land that's owned by the applicant and is made available for solely for family purposes of burial and interment on the property. The statute suggests that there be a defined legal description of the cemetery area for purposes of statement and placement in the land records. And there's also the requirement of some sort of survey plat so that it's clear where the boundaries are located. And you can imagine that we need that of record so that we don't have a mishap later on, right? And so, I have put together, without the board's awareness or knowledge, a request form for use for this purpose and for later purposes that explains the process and provides a way for us to be able to get that information into the land records. So, I wanted to make you aware of that. It's a very simple, one-page document. I'm happy to share it with you if you're interested. But it tracks the language of the statute and it provides for this board to receive the request, to act on it, and then for that request to actually be made a part of the land records, okay? So, we're just trying to cover all of the potential loose ends there.
What do we do? What do we do about the ones we've done prior to this?
Most of the ones we've done in the past year, they've actually complied with the statute without even knowing they were. We have a legal description, a survey plat, and you can actually go on the land records and you'll find little bitty squares embedded with inside pieces of property that are labeled as private cemetery.
Well, I think I got two of them.
Yes, sir. So, in the past, Jared, it hasn't been as demonstrably handled like this.
That's what, reading I asked, I've not seen this before. Yeah, okay.
So, with your permission, what I'd like for you to do is to approve the use of this form for later purposes and also to cover the loose end base of the requirement of the filing fee with the land records. Under Title 25, the January clerk is required to extract a fee for the filing of this information in the land records. Very similar to a deed and it's charged similarly with other land record requests. So, what you're doing is approving the use of the form and you're establishing the filing fee for use by the January clerk.
Most approved by Daniel.
Second.
Seconded by Jay. Any discussion? All favors aye?
Aye.
All opposed?
I've got a couple of matters that I need to address with you in executive that both litigation related.
Okay. Keith?
Good morning. Item A under my section is approval to accept the DEQ grant. It's for waste tire collection program for small quantity generators of waste tires. And it's in the amount of $100,000 and for the board president authority to execute documents.
Most approved. Second.
Most approved by Jay, seconded by Brad. Any discussion? Not all favors aye?
Aye.
All opposed?
Alright, item B is authority to obtain quotes for the lease purchase financing of a chip spreader with guaranteed 48-month buyback of $85,000. And this is for the bid awarded back in December of last year.
Same way?
Most approved by Jay, seconded by Daniel. All favors aye? Additional business?
I have one item of additional business, quickly. We have, I request the board to address the list to be added to the record. It's for items to be destroyed per the Mississippi Department of Archives, State of Mississippi Government Records Retention Schedule. We have a shred day scheduled and we have a lot of boxes that need to be destroyed. I just need a motion to add it to the agenda, authority to execute the destruction.
Make a motion to add to it, Jared.
Motion to add to the agenda by Brad, seconded by Steve. All favors aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Most approved.
Make a motion approved.
Most approved by Brad, seconded by Steve. Any discussion? All favors aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. And I believe, huh? You got something?
Oh, we just had kind of notice the other day, but this week, me and Keith's been talking about it. We have four dump trucks that's coming off in what, 35, 40 days, I think, something like that, Keith. We have an opportunity to move two to auction this week. Guaranteed buyback on all four of them. What we'd like to do is surplus those trucks now. We're going to keep two trucks. We'll get two new trucks in the place of it. We're just surplusing them a little early, is all we're doing.
Wait, you're getting rid of four and only replacing two of them?
We're getting four. We'll get the other two in about 30, 30 to 40 days, Jay. What the auction company's doing is they're guaranteeing a number of 157,000 on four trucks apiece. We're going to take two to the auction. They're going to sell those two. If they bring more than 157, we get the money off of them. But they guarantee us that across the board on all four of them. We're going to keep two of the trucks until the other two trucks come in, so we won't be out of trucks.
You're going to surplus all four, Mike's going to keep two and keep using them. Two are headed to the auction.
And then when we get the new two, then we're going to send the other two.
You got it.
While we wait on the other two to come.
Right. And whenever they sell those two trucks, if they bring more than the 157, they'll credit us. We'll get it.
Mike, I want you to do me a favor, man. We do this stuff so often. I want you to give me a list of-
What's coming on and off?
Yeah, how much equipment we got and how many years we got it each for.
Okay. These are the trucks, these are trucks we did for the one year. That's the reason they're coming around so quick on us.
Gotcha.
Which is worth our good. We hadn't had to spend no money. We don't have to put no tires on them.
All maintenance is paid for.
Most of these trucks got 16,000 miles. They're going. We're getting roughly there.
Are you able to get new trucks? Heck, you look at all these car lots and they empty.
Well, and that is the deal, Jay. I mean, they've got two that's ready and they want to go ahead and give us those two trucks so we don't have to prolong. If we don't take these two trucks today, we may be, they'll let us keep our four trucks, but we may be November swapping them out.
So, we've already, have we already done the order yet for the four?
Yes, sir.
So, we have?
We did that back in January. So, that's why everything's kind of following track, but it's still like vehicle market. It's a little-
I just, so you think them other two are going to come in?
Yes, sir.
Or if not, we'll keep the other two until they do.
I understand. I'm just asking, you think they're going to actually come in the reasonable timeframe?
Yes, sir. I mean, they've got a date on them. The trucks are built.
Yeah.
So, they just got to get them to the body place and body place is the one that's running behind right now.
I got you.
Way vehicle, that's the reason they bring so much now. You can't find them.
Yeah. So, you need to add it to the agenda?
I need to add that to-
Make a motion to add it to the agenda?
Motion to add that to the agenda and then-
Motion to add this to the agenda by Daniel.
Second.
Seconded by Brad. Any discussion? Not all favors aye?
Aye.
All opposed?
And this will be going to JG Woods Auction Company.
And then motion approved?
Most approved by-
We got a contract one?
I will get your contract.
Most approved by Daniel, seconded by Brad. Any discussion? Not all favors aye?
Aye.
All opposed?
Back out.
Okay. Anything else?
I think you had executive session, two items litigation. I'm making a motion to go into the executive session. Want to need for it?
Alright. Motion to go to the executive session by Daniel, seconded by Steve for need to discuss personnel?
We're going to do that.
Litigation. All favors aye?
All opposed?